Go ahead and get started with the city council work session for Monday, August the 8th. The first item up on the agenda is Coastal Resilience Index, and we've got the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board, Amy Paulson and Nicole Love presenting. Thank you all for coming today.
Thank you for having us today. I'm sorry, I'm pushing this. I'm gonna push this here. So, my name is Nicole Love. I'm with the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board. I was on the advisory board and then got off and then got back on. See, that's how much I love Fairhope. So, in 2017, the city of Fairhope did a, what's called Coastal Resilience Index, and that is, and Jody will talk about it a little bit more, but it was done in 2017, and you base it on storms. So, in 2017, when they did it, I think it was based on maybe Katrina or something of that nature. Well, we have now had Sally that has hit our area. It was a completely different storm than what we thought it was. So, as the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board, and then also myself, working on the Eastern Shore watershed management plan, we have recommended for the city to redo the Coastal Resilience Index with the information that was gathered from Sally. And then also with a lot of the changes that the city has been working on. So, I'm gonna introduce Jody Thompson. She is actually with the Auburn Extension and was one of the folks that did the stakeholder workshop before and would be doing it again this year.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, thanks for having me. Thank you, Nicole. I do have copies to pass for anyone that wants them.
And Casey, I see you here. Are you also with part of the Coastal Resiliency?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I didn't forget about you. You are being passed those stuff by you. So, I am Jody Thompson. I'm with Auburn University and the Cooperative Extension System over in Mobile. The Community Resilience Index is a tool that is a facilitated discussion. It identifies both strengths and weaknesses in resilience planning. More than 70 Gulf communities have done at least one of these exercises. Like Nicole mentioned, Fairhope completed this in 2017. Since then, you have had a more recent storm record, kind of a recent storm of Sally. You've also had staff turnover and implemented a lot of recent projects. So, it's a good time to consider redoing the CRI. Also, since the city has participated in it, the CRI has been updated. There have been some expanded sections that better reflect community needs. One thing that Nicole asked, that the environmental board asked that I touch on is how is this different from your regular flood management planning and your hazard planning? As you can see, this is a quick index. It's not meant to be comprehensive planning. It's meant to help you identify where your strengths and weaknesses are. It includes your existing plans, but it also reaches outside of that framework. You discuss mitigation. We take into account experience levels with storms and also community partnerships. It's also an inclusive process. It reaches across departments. We all know that departments tend to get a little stove piped a bit. This allows for discussion amongst both staff, but also brings in parts of the community that are important during disaster, and that's what Casey is gonna talk a little bit about. The CRI process in and of itself does not count towards points under the community rating system. However, it ties to the program, and if you'll notice, there are small boxes on each of the sections that points out how you can achieve more points in the community rating system. I also handed out a brochure about the community rating system from ADECA. Fairhope, I know, is not a part of the community rating system, but this will help you to better understand the rating system, and as a result, one of your recommendations might be to pursue that. Some of the benefits of the community, I am not an expert in the community rating system, however, some of those benefits are, A, savings on flood insurance policies for your community, for your residents. So, like I mentioned, this is a facilitated process. I would be the facilitator, and the value lies in the conversation as much as the exercise itself. The exercise is free to the community. It only requires about two to three hours of staff time and also a meeting location. And just for your information, scores are reported only back to the municipality. It's up to you if or how you want to distribute them. From our end, we do not use them for comparison between other communities. We don't report them to any state or federal partners. They are the communities in and of your own to do with as you wish. There's no overall score. It's all yes or no answers, and each section is kind of scored individually, low, medium, high. So, it's not like we're coming in and grading Fairhope. We are just helping you identify what you're doing well for planning and responding to disaster and where there might be some projects that you can identify. Completing the CRI also opens you up to potential funding. In fact, when Fairhope did it, completed it in 2017, it allowed the community to receive some small grants that helped you implement a few small identified projects. For example, the Gulf Climate Community of Practice is a regional group that offers small grants, and to be eligible for these small grants, you must have completed an assessment like the Community Resilience Index. I think that kind of gives you an overview of the index itself and what the process would be like. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Got a couple of questions. So, the process in and of itself is free, only a couple of hours of staff time and dedicated space to do it. We are not members of the community rating system, but this would be a step towards doing that if we wanted to pursue that route. And I guess my only other question would be, is there any gotcha? I mean, is there any, you mentioned that it would be private, but if we fill something out that's subpar, are we setting ourselves up for any kind of issue down the road?
Absolutely not. Not unless you report the scores to somewhere else that were to use that negatively, but no, not from our end. This is merely an exercise for you to be able to kind of identify where your weaknesses are, and then in the future, use that either for grants that we can identify, help you identify, or grants that you already know about, or for technical assistance. We have folks, other extension folks that can, and myself, that can come in and help facilitate some projects.
Council members, any questions for Jody?
Yeah, I have a question, council.
Yes, sir.
Point of information. This, I see it says it reduces the flood insurance NFIP by five to 45%. So, we've already have one baseline in 2016, correct?
2017, yes.
2017, okay. So, there's not much we need to do on this one, except kind of, do we go through the whole process again since we already have that baseline?
So, the reduction in insurance premiums comes through the community rating system.
I get it, I'm getting there. Just trying.
So, this is a separate process that can help you become a member of the CRS, and this, you know, you have a baseline, but it's six years old now.
Okay.
And you've had a different storm. You've got new staff members. You've got, you know, new knowledge and projects that have been implemented.
So, that would just help us repeat.
It would help you get an idea of where you are right now and where you can put your efforts.
Okay, and when we become a part of the National Flood Insurance Program or the Community Rating System of Alabama, what does that process look like?
So, I am not an expert with that, but that, there is, there is an office within the state that does come in and help you. You have to fill out, you know, their paperwork, and then you have to undergo a site visit with them. We can help facilitate that happening, but I can't give you details because that's not what I do.
Yeah, I understand, but that would probably be the only reason or the best reason I see incentive-wise for us to complete this particular program is to get that rating and to get our community a decrease in their flood insurance. So, we would definitely want to push that and not, the reason I'm saying this is we did it in 2017 and this never happened, and so...
2017, the community rating system was not identified as an action.
Okay, all right. So, this, the community system is new. So, we would complete that process this time. Okay, we have it. All right, very good.
Yeah, it seems like there's not, I mean, it doesn't sound like there's any negative to going through the process of doing the exercise or at least checking this out, and then if you want to move to the next step, it's at least, you know, the paperwork for the first phase is done.
And I'd like to give Casey a minute to talk about her experience with the previous one and some of the work that we've been doing since then. Thank you, Jody and Nicole.
I was actually in attendance at the 2017 meeting, representing business. That's probably not a surprise, and it was a very good exercise. Our storm that we created was actually the water of Katrina and the wind of Ivan. So, we really packed a punch with our storm, and needless to say, and it was, I think we started at like 8:30. We were done before lunch. It's a very succinct process and extremely interesting. And from that, one of the areas that we really had no information on was your business after a storm, like who's open, who's not, critical infrastructure like banks, lumber yards, hardware stores, grocery stores, some of those immediate needs. And so, the chamber took that on to send out letters to those that we identified across the eastern shore, because, you know, not everybody has a big lumber or home improvement store next door. So, we looked at it across the base, across the lines, but we actually sent and said, would you stay in place? How quickly would you be open? Do you have a generator? Would your ATM be available? And got a lot of information back. And again, we would do that again and update that information, and then also from the resiliency and the grants, we were working towards a grant that would help us with our business resiliency. I know you probably have had to do planning and catastrophe planning. I know when I was in banking for my 17 branches, it was about this big, but it wasn't really something I ever opened. This was a practical approach. Say during Hurricane Michael, it's been identified that in catastrophic events, only six out of 10 businesses reopen. So, the base of our community are small business owners and retailers. I mean, it's hard to imagine that out of every 10 businesses in downtown Fairhope, that four would not be able to reopen, and that is because of the plans that are needed for IT, infrastructure redundancy, the proper insurance, all of those different things. We were working towards a grant that would allow us to, we actually started a survey of our area businesses, asking them where they felt they were in that process, and then we were gonna roll out different forums and different places where the businesses could come and learn how to be more resilient after a catastrophic, outside of a catastrophic event, and of course, we would put in the word pandemic in this as well, like how do you recover? How do you stay afloat? So, the resiliency index, I thought, was an extremely good exercise. It was easy. It was very informational, and those in the room really came together to talk about it in a way that I had not seen before. So, as a member of that group, I would highly recommend it. I'm also working with Daphne and Spanish Ford to work on their resiliency index, but we would, again, take that business role, and I think it would be very good information to update.
Well, it sounds like it's certainly worthwhile exercise in council. I think what I'm hearing from y'all is that y'all are also interested in the community rating system, and Eric said he could maybe add a little information to that, just to give a few minutes. If you don't mind, I don't want us to get too far off topic of the work session, but if you could just talk about that next step.
Sure. Actually, thank you for bringing it up, because that is actually in my 23 budget to add a CRS coordinator position. The CRS is, we are members, just so you know, Councilman Martin, we are members of the National Flood Insurance Program, have been for many years. You cannot get flood insurance if your community does not participate in the NFIP. So, we do. We have an ordinance that is based on the CFR, Code of Federal Regulations, that the floodplain management is set on, and we have our own ordinance. So, we have increased requirements in our ordinance, like we require you build a foot higher than FEMA says you have to. CRS is an additional program where you do things more so, even more so above and beyond, and the higher you go, the better your insurance reductions for all of your flood policy holders are. We have not done it up to this point because of the expanded jurisdiction. When we're in the police jurisdiction, that gives us all of scenic 98, everything up in Montrose, which are very difficult to police. But at this point, you know, I've talked to my colleagues around the county. We had decided internally that, and we've been to several training courses and things, so we are interested in joining the CRS in the coming year, and that's something we had planned. I've spoken to the mayor about it, and getting someone, it's a lot of paperwork. It's FEMA, so there's a lot of document tracking that has to go, so we would like to designate one of our current staff to take on the additional responsibility of being a CRS coordinator, which most of the jurisdictions have done that. They've kind of double-handed someone that's in one of their departments to handle that. So, that is something that we had been talking about, and it's in our budget. You'll see it when the budget comes out to be able to do that.
Okay, thank you. So, my next question, Lisa, is this an actionable item? Do we need to have this on an agenda if people want to pursue it, or do we just say, it sounds good, let's move forward?
I would think you need to vote on it.
Okay, all right. Council, any additional questions on this? You want to move it forward to the next agenda, maybe?
Could.
All right. Sounds like everybody's on board, so let's put it on the next resolution on the next agenda, if you don't mind. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Casey. Appreciate y'all. Next item up is the Advanced Metering Infrastructure, the AMI update from Jeremy. Jeremy Morgan?
I get indigestion as soon as I come up here immediately.
Don't make you that nervous, huh?
So, yes, the mayor asked me, Cory's just gonna leave, man.
You ordered.
Yeah, I guess so. You're right. So, yeah, the mayor said she wants me to just give you guys an update. As they are my coordinator now, there's not much on AMI, and I'll talk about that here in just a little bit, but in the meantime, she's had me handling some solar and some EV stuff, so I just want to give you guys an update on that. So, solar, you guys see the solar canopy? I guess she told me to take some pictures. I'm not a photographer or a presenter, so I'm just gonna run through this. Does anybody got their Volkswagen plugged in out there?
Somebody?
Okay, good. There's a Volkswagen. I was just gonna ask some questions, but anyways, they're not here, so anyhow. So, that's the solar canopy. Everybody knows the solar canopy out there. It's also got the EV chargers in it. AMEA is heading all this up. They've got all the data for it. I wanted to have a lot of information to give you guys. Unfortunately, the, there's a device called an SMA collector that when it was installed during this project, it was blank, so there's zero information coming back from it to give you, and it has been sent off on an RMA and has now come back Thursday. Arthur with, Arthur Bishop of AMEA is gonna be down to do some work for Riviera and those guys, and hopefully he'll come over and get that installed so we can start seeing the actual, what this solar array is producing. You know, there's 80 panels, 320 KW each on them. It's 25.6 KW DC, 24 KW AC, so I know that's a bunch of blah, 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 but it means something to somebody who cares. So, that's that, and then on the solar panel side of it, as we're now installing solar panels in Fairhope, we have four residential solar sites, and two of them are TESSA Power Walls. You know, if you care about those numbers, you can holler at me. I'll give them to you. We're ranging from 14 KW to 450 KW, you know, per month, depending on which site you're looking at. The TESSA, you know, those are just store batteries, store, you know, powering your batteries. They're really not wanting to put it back on our system. Blakeney over here has one that they just installed, but we found out that our meters do not do the bidirectional on our 320 meters, so we had to order some, electric plumber ordered some 320, 2SE meters. So, we got those in, installed that last week, and can start seeing the numbers on that house this week. So, you can probably talk with Jason Jarvis on the billing side of it. I think we are crediting them back on what they put back on our system. We haven't really come up with a, for paying them back for anything that they use. I don't think, I think the state's still working with that. Jerry, you might know better than I do, but something like that, they're still working on that, so. So, that's that on the solar, and then we're just, we're not blowing up a solar like places in Georgia, Florida, anything like that, but I'm sure it'll be coming, so. EVs, I'll just leave it on that one. Thanks, buddy. So, this one, actually, I will move it. You're right. I'll come back to that picture, but this is the EVs at the parking deck. In March, we had those going. We got those two stations installed, and each station has two ports, so there's four ports there at the parking deck behind the Hampton. Where am I at here? So, in March, we installed those. There were six sessions in March for 77 KW, kilowatt hours, and we made a whole whopping $11.86 off that. And I'll talk about what we're charging and everything, and you guys can weigh in on that when I get through giving you these numbers. In April, we still had the same setup, and it looks, there you go. You can see it like that. It's on the far right there. That's what it looks like from the side angle, and we did 27 sessions on those two stations for 276 KW hours, and netted $65. In May, we added the solar here, canopy EV chargers, and with all of them, those combined, we had 78 sessions, and ever since then, we've been pretty steady at 78, 79, 78 in July, running from 740 to 865 KW hours, so making about $175, $180. So, total since March, or since April with the six sessions in March, we've had 268 sessions on these five electric vehicle charging stations for 2.73 megawatt hours that we've used for, we've netted 575. So, that's about $2 per session if you just average it out total, so. And they range from anywhere from 15 minutes to hours. And you know we're using charge points. The one here at the parking deck, I've had to reset this guy on station one port one several times. The breaker keeps tripping. I've got a message in the charge point to find out what they would like for me to do about that, if we just change the breaker out. Maybe it's a weak breaker, I'm not sure, but I'm looking into that, haven't heard back from them on that. Right now, we're currently charging by the hour, $1.25 per hour. You guys know all this information, with free parking while you're charging. It's a dollar per hour charge after 30-minute grace period. Once you finish charging, you get 30 minutes, get your notification coming, and then move it so someone else can get in there. This is close to what others are, that I've been able to look at or charge in. You can go to PlugShare, which is this guy here, and you can log onto there and see everywhere that there's a charging station that is associated with PlugShare, and then you can look and see how much they're charging and whatnot. Some are $2 an hour, some are 25 cents per kilowatt hour, so they do it per kilowatt. Some of them, just a flat rate that they just charge you. Some don't charge you anything.
On this PlugShare, I actually had a conversation last week about this, so one challenge with this is somebody gets off the interstate, they see Fairhope's got a plug, come down to Fairhope to plug in, they get there, and there's a non-EV.
You call that ICE? Internal combustion engine? Yeah.
Yep, yep. You got one of those sitting in the space, and they've driven all the way down here. I mean, is that a regular occurrence, or?
I've noticed it more, less out here, more underneath the parking deck, just because everybody wants to be up close, right there in the front, and you'll see on those pictures also, RJ, I know they've been real busy. You've seen the paint that they have out here. I'm hoping that he got me emailing that they'll schedule in to get those spots painted to make them a little more noticeable, that they are actually, they do have the signs up, and then Willie, fortunately, made me some signs last week that you see there that shows where those charging stations are. So, we're hoping to identify those a little better to keep that from happening, but unless you guys are gonna start doing something about it, they, there's no logging, parking there, I guess.
Well, there is.
Is there a law?
Yeah, they have no parking, electric vehicle only, and personally, I'll be a little tough on it. I think that the police need to start stroking tickets, and I have personally had to call them from complaints I received, and I think that they gave the people a warning the first time. The second time, maybe they're gonna, you know, of course, if you get a warning, you're probably not gonna park there if the police show up at your door, but, you know, the second time, for sure, they ought to stroke tickets where they're taking our resources off the street to go check them, and Marcus, you need to prosecute, judge you as a handle of fine.
There's not much respect in this world, and you see it all over the place, so.
Now, how much time is an electric vehicle got in that spot?
How long have they been out here?
No, how much time?
How long, when I pull in there and get charged up, how much time?
It depends.
Till it fills up, or?
Yeah, but you get 30 minutes after you get an alert that it's charged to move it.
Oh, okay.
And then you're paying for the...
You get an alert on your phone?
Dollar per hour is what we're, now, all these are, now, the mayor and I talked about this when we first installed this. I'm sure she probably talked with you guys. We want to look at it for a couple of months, six months or so, just see what we're looking at. If people hate it, they like it. They're not charging there because it's too high. On my PlugShare app, there's not many, there's not any comments about, you know, this is too high, I hate it, I don't want to park there.
The price is...
There is about the ICE being there, but, yeah, so, I mean, I just, relatively from where we're at around, I mean, if you look at it, you look at, what is it, 30, yeah, we're right there. If you look at $2 per hour, that's 30 KW out, 30 cents KW hour, that's $2.76 of gas, because they convert it over to e-gas. That's nothing.
Yeah, I mean, we're not making, it's not a moneymaker, but it gets the people into town or down here. They charge up, they got 30 minutes to kill, they go out to eat, they go spend some time and money in the store. I mean, to me, it's more about drawing those people into the area, and it's a service.
Killing time?
I haven't seen any of these, these charges for parking there after. I have not even seen any of those, so I don't think anybody's staying there any longer.
So, you said, Jeremy, we're not charging anything for the time, because usually, you know, the charge is a time and then a usage fee. I don't mind the 30-minute, you know?
We're not, it's free?
But I thought we talked about this several months ago or a couple of months ago, and that we were gonna, we were gonna institute a parking charge. You know, out here, it's only, it's only producing electricity during the day, so at night, it doesn't do anybody any good to try to charge, because we don't have battery backup there. But in the parking garage, you know, downtown, I could easily see hotel guests and electric vehicles needing to leave their car parked.
There's been several parked there at night and leave 8 o'clock in the morning.
In fact, you know, the last time I was in there, it was just under two weeks ago, when I got a call, actually, didn't get a call. I walked by, a citizen that marched me back there, and they were all full. I mean, in fact, they were not only, there was somebody parked, and there were two spots taken up, and people had parked on the other side of the wall and backed up on private property and plugged into it, so. I think we ought to consider getting, I don't want to, I don't want to, it don't need to be a money producer, but it don't need to be a loss for us either.
Definitely my prerogative for you guys to come up with, and I'd be more than happy to. We can, we can change it easily in the charge points.
Right.
And they, they don't set any rates. It's all on the owner, so.
Yeah, I had heard the two to two, and I don't remember, I think it was a combined $2 to $2.50 an hour they're charging.
I'm sure people use it if they need...
AMEA gave us some advice on that. That was...
They did. I used their advice when I was making these...
Can you click on that map and tell, tell us what Riviera's charging? I'm sure that's Riviera over there.
No, because this is just a screenshot, but I will, I'll get that to you, and I think they're up to, Ben might know. Ben, you talked with Scott when you went and looked at the DC Fast Charge, what they were charging per hour, or are they going kilowatt now?
He was one kilowatt.
They started at, at a dollar kilowatt hour, maybe $1.50, then they found out they, that was too much, went down. Now, they're at a kilowatt, 25 cents kilowatt hour or something like that. Yeah, which is roughly right around just less than $2 now, if you look at that one. And I'd have to get that exact number for you. I don't wanna guess that it lied to you, so.
Any other A M, A M I updates?
Well, I ain't even got to the A M I yet.
I didn't think so.
I know Richard's chomping at the bit to talk about moisture and Civic Center or whatever. What else I have here? Uh, blah, 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 blah. Yeah, the, the Piggawig site, you guys know about that grant that we're trying to get for the fast chargers. I talked with Jessica Ben. I think it was last week and hopefully that'll get approved and escalated for twenty twenty three. That'd be a nice project. Uh, A M I, okay, Automated Metering Infrastructure, what my title says. Uh, we first started discussing this in, uh, October. Uh, met with them and, and Katama with A M E A Katama. Uh, that time we was unsure how things were gonna be going, you know, and since then, I've cleared up a couple of things. Uh, we had a meeting in mid-April that kind of laid out things a little better. Uh, we're trying to get, you know, who's gonna be doing what, because there's a lot of moving parts involved with this. You got billing, you got meters, you got all kind of stuff. The, the data, there's a ton of data coming in, but, uh, since then, the base stations that we ordered have arrived and, and just so you know, A M E A is funding all this. They're cutting the P Os for all this stuff. They're the ones spearheading this whole thing, so we're kinda, we got middlemen all along the way. A M E A's making that final decision. We say, hey, we need this. We gotta go through them. We can't go through Coromane directly. But I got Katama Tech, who is the, um, the consultants. I got Coromane, who are the ones who are providing the stuff. We got Census, that's who we're going with. So it's really convoluted. Anyways.
Can I correct you one?
Yeah.
One, that's, wanna make sure the council's clear on this. So A M E A's not paying for this.
Well.
They're withholding funds that are due us that we get as a refund and they're, and, and they're taking our cost out of that. So it's cost, it's, we're paying for it.
We're paying for it. We need to, it's something we need to do.
It's our money. We give it to A M E A and they pay in the P O. There you go. All right, so you got it.
It's a reluctant.
I think it's debatable.
Okay, I was about to say that was a reluctant, uh.
So the base stations since then have arrived. Coromane was wanting to try to get those this week. It looks like now, because you know how things are, uh, we're waiting on cables, waiting on antennas. Now it's looking like Monday the twenty ninth, they're gonna schedule to have the base stations installed. That'll be one at Nichols and one at the tower at Walmart. And then after they install the sensors, we'll do all the testing, communication with the FlexNet Cloud R and I, that's the regional network interface. Make sure all the data's flowing correctly, make sure, we've got four meters in, four whole electric meters. So we'll be putting them strategically to make sure that they are actually talking. Um, yeah, it's not a, not a whole lot of meters. And then they're expecting for this, uh, all the rest of the ship of the meters to be here, uh, first quarter of the calendar year twenty three. So that's what schedule's looking like and that's how our time delay is looking on getting A M I going.
Yes, sir. Go right there. You got a question?
Yeah, well, important information. But look, so can you kind of give the, the, uh, community, laypeople kind of a, a brief synopsis on what advanced metering infrastructure is just so people can kind of understand what we're doing?
Absolutely. So if you know the, the metering industry, we started with, put in a meter. You had a, a guy go out, read that meter, bring it back, wrote all the information down, you put it into a system. That's how you got built. Uh, then it evolved into A M R, which is what we decided to go with a few years back, where it's just a radio read. So it pulses up, sends out a, a read. Uh, the meter readers can now drive by instead of walking to each individual house and they can collect that data. And then they can take it back to the office, download it and get your billing. And now with A M I, it's, it's a lot more automated, Automated Metering Infrastructure. Uh, you're gonna have that reading actually go through, uh, to a, to a base station, a collector that's gonna gather that information. And then it's gonna send it to a server and it's gonna compute all of that. So instead of us getting a reading after thirty days, we can get the reading every minute, every hour, every day, whatever. So it's gonna be a lot better for, and you don't have to send anybody out there, so it's gonna be a lot, it's gonna be more beneficial for us as utility because we're not spending all that money in gas and, and we'll, of course, take the, I don't know what they want to do. I'm not gonna speculate. Hopefully we'll take those employees and use them somewhere else, of course, we need them. So, but anyways, that data is gonna be what's key because it's gonna be able to, uh, cut back on our, our late bills and be cut back. It's gonna be able to help customers. So it's gonna be more customer friendly. They'll be able to see how much usage they are and all that stuff.
Right, very good.
I can fill that in later. If anybody's ever got a question, they always call me, you know, even though I have you talked to them about it.
And that's the biggest reason that we're doing this.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's definitely, uh, customer related because we want them, if you live paycheck to paycheck, you're gonna wanna know, you're gonna need to be able to pay this amount and see what you're using. Uh, we'll have a customer portal through Census also that might be upgraded later, which I hope it will be, but this might be good enough, but, uh, anyways, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, not a problem. Anyways, that's, uh, that's it. I've been doing a bunch of spreadsheets. We got seven thousand eighty one electric meters. And I've been, been breaking those downs in the books. We got three cycles, um, and, you know, that are broke down into how they read them. That's how we're gonna end up changing the meters out. We're gonna have a dual, you know, reading cycle for a while till we get all this going and then this is just electric. Then we'll be doing water and gas in our, our territory, that's later on down the line to come. But anyways, that's my world. You got a glimpse into. I answer any questions about any of that, that good.
Questions for Jeremy, counsel? All right, thank you for the update, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Johnson, we've got, uh, moisture control survey, H V A C and Civic Center all on the radar.
Yes, thank you, Council President, counsel. The mayor asked me to kind of, to, to share this information, kind of cover it, uh, because, you know, when we were starting the process of trying to have a design team figure out how to ultimately reconfigure some, uh, heating and air conditioning for this portion of the building, we kind of ran into some roof problems that, that, that needed to kind of be vetted thoroughly. And part of that, uh, research and engineering incorporated came and did a, a roof survey for us. And even though it says moisture survey, of course, you don't want moisture in your roofs. Just to kind of give you just a, a little bit of a, a background and understanding, if you think of this building, uh, that we're in being a tale of two roofs. You have the roof that pretty much covers what we consider the heating and cooled portion, the inside portion. And, and that roof is a, a, what we call a buildup roof. Um, it is literally gypsum that is mounted to the, um, bar joists, which, which span the, the roof structure. And then it has a bituminous, uh, buildup of, of layers on it and then a mopped asphalt coating on, on top of it. So it's a buildup roof. A lot of people will look at and say it's a tar roof, okay? Then we have about eleven and a half thousand square feet of covered porch that runs from, uh, east to west and out front. And it is a, a metal roof with a ply buildup and, and a gravel system on top of it. Best we can tell, the, the roof over the porch is original equipment. When this building was dedicated in, in eighty four, we can assume that was a new roof at that point in time. So it's been out there for thirty eight years. Good news about that roof system, it, it just covers people who are walking to one of the entrances of the building. If water is flowing through it, no computers are being damaged, no carpet's being damaged, no sheet rock. In this report, they, I don't know where this information came from, but they think the last time any major work had been done on the roof over the heating and cooled space was, was two thousand. And it was a twenty year roof system and, well, it's, it's twenty twenty two, so, uh, it, it is, um, uh, an, an issue that needs to be addressed. Secondly, for whatever reason, as you move from east to west in the heating and cooled, it goes from poor to better, okay? Meaning that the U S A portion apparently has the best of the roof, Civic Center's the next best, and then the part that houses the functional offices, the cities are, are the one that has, has the major issues. And, um, you know, bottom line is when you can get through, and they, they did a very thorough report and they did non-invasive as well as invasive testing. They used, uh, FLIR as well as, as, as moisture meters, but then they did cut cores in five locations to, to calibrate and see if their non-invasive information did, was backed up and where they cut the cores, where they said it was wet, the cores were wet. And where they cut the core where it said it was dry, they found the core to be dry. So the, the, they had some, at least some field testing that, that verified that. One note is basically roofs aren't built like this anymore. The gypsum is a great material, but when it gets wet, it doesn't have really any structural component and can't hold water and have some other issues. Most would be a, a metal deck system and then have buildup on top of it, but, uh, uh, that was the, the style roof of, of, of the time and, and that type of thing. So what, what is the bottom line? Uh, the architect did put together a schedule, a, a recommendation and not really understanding how we budget and how our budget years flow. They, they had a, a twenty two cost, a twenty three cost and a twenty four cost. And we reflect the twenty two and twenty three in the projected budget, which are, are pretty large numbers. And the porch portion, that eleven and a half thousand, they're recommending replacement in the final budget year. If there was one that we could probably drag our feet on or delay, that one is, you know, it is what it is, but it's not protecting finished face and, 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 uh, that type of thing. But, uh, if you go to the very back of the report, uh, it, section A is one of those that they call out some immediate need on there. And, and if you notice where section A is, that is the office of the treasury, the office of the city clerk, the mayor's office, the billing office, the main lobby, the, 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 the functional business portion of city hall. And they do recommend a replacement system on that. That is basically pulling up, uh, the membrane, replacing any wet or damaged substructure and putting new membrane and buildup on it. And, uh, that works out to be about sixteen thousand square feet and the estimate, uh, was three hundred and forty three thousand nine hundred and twenty four dollars. And, and you can see that they, they go down to, uh, the next areas at least and they, it, immediately to restore and or repair, uh, sections B, C and D. But if you notice on section C, the next year, they say go from a repair to a restoration. So in this case, we wouldn't do both. We would do, uh, you know, go, go immediately to the restoration. And I know that when you start seeing numbers, when you add them all up, closing in on a million dollars and knowing that this report was produced back in April. And what does that million dollars cost today? It could be more than a million dollars. Looking for some guidance, I know treasury is, what, what do we wanna, what do we, we wanna do? The immediate needs first? And then plan for it over the next several budget years? Um, or is it one of those is that rip off the Band-Aid and, and let's get the, the roof system at least that covers the heating and cooled portions addressed in its entirety, either through replacement, repair and restoration?
I think when you start talking about a million dollars for roof, then we also gotta take into the conversation about the whole picture of the Civic Center and I know we get a lot of mileage out of it and it's served us very well and still gets a ton of use. But if we're gonna spend seven figures, I think that's a conversation, council members, that we gotta, whether we want to or not, we probably at least need to take into consideration what route to go.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's, it creates the time to have a, a serious conversation on long-term plan for, for this piece right here in its entirety.
And then I think that depending on what we think the answer is to that, then we just, that would probably help dictate whether we do a patch job or a full restoration of the roof. But, um, I don't know, pretty old building. It was not built to be a civic center originally either, so.
Personally, I don't think that would be, in my opinion, that would be a good investment. Um, is there something weeping out of the ceiling right now?
Yes, if you go back to the hall in Dale Chance's room, we got a call today of flooding. It was coming through the roof and that's one of those areas identified as ponding water.
So we may have to have a.
Yeah, we have.
Paige sent me pictures of the roof falling in over the stage in the Civic Center. I'm not sure what, what is causing that problem. But I mean, it, it's, listen, it's, it's a, a well-seasoned buil- building. It's seen a lot of use and, uh, and, you know, and it is, it's, it's a vital part of our community life. I mean, it gets used for everything, I mean, so, um, so, you know, I, I, I definitely think there's got to, there's got to at least be some repair money budgeted, yeah. And we can always go back and ask the architect, what is, what is a, um, a, a triage, uh, recommendation to at least get us to that point where decisions made, but I did want to make you aware and, and, you know, I just plugged the number in the budget and Kim, after she had the smelling salts, she called me and said, what was this? So, um, and, uh, but had to have a placeholder to start the conversation, so.
No, I, I appreciate what you're doing. I, I'm thinking almost, uh, if we had any kind of back of the number, a back of the napkin calculation on what a new Civic Center would cost, that also might steer our direction one way or the other.
Well, I think that's the conversation Councilman Robinson is speaking on. We need to go back.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Kind of get those numbers and compare apples. That's exactly what.
That's what I'm thinking. I mean, and again, you know, if you look at this building, you know, I mean, at least the way somebody like me sees it as a layperson, I mean, there's three, there's three pieces. And you've got the, the office portion in the front, this room and the Civic Center is the second part and then.
The old library.
The old library and stuff that are behind it. Um, now, obviously, there's no way, I don't think, and I'm just thinking out loud here, it's probably not a good idea is, you know, you can't just bulldoze this building and, and start fresh because there's too much that goes into this building, that's done in this building that you can't do without. But, but some phased approach of, you know, build out the front. You know, then kind of gradually move back. I mean, you have to house Mardi Gras here. I mean, it's.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it's gonna take some strategic thinking to figure out exactly the way to do that if and when that decision is made to do something like that. But it, it's, it's a conversation at this point that, that's gotta be had at some point.
Well, we've got to at least address Richard's question here in the budget cycle about what to do about the roof, so.
Yeah.
We, we're not gonna solve that problem tonight, but we certainly gotta have the conversation.
Yes.
At some point. We may have to have a special.
I'd like to add a little bit to this. You know, we've been talking about a new Civic Center for a long time and I, I kind of thought it was in that five to ten year range because we've got a K one center project that I think we probably want to undertake before we get a new Civic Center. Uh, and, and with that in mind, and, you know, and I'm talking about a performing arts center at the K one center. And with that in mind, I think that would take considerable resources, but hopefully be finished in five years. And then immediately embark on a, a, a new Civic Center, which would be a raised Civic Center, it's probably gonna involve a parking deck of some sort. Uh, maybe integrated because we need more parking here. Um, but just on the immediate issue of the roof. Having, having gone through this in the last two years on a fairly good sized roof, commercial roof, um, it's not a terrible price. Uh, I know you don't wanna spend a million dollars, but if you're talking about something that'll get us through, you know, seven or eight years, or six or eight years maybe, um, it's not a terrible investment. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a terrible price. It's, I've, I've actually was kind of pleased at when I saw the numbers on that, although it's a big number. It's kind of like you say, I, you know, but the, but the, but the Civic Center, you're talking a, a thirty million dollar project, so.
You're talking something major, so, you know. And I, I would say if I'm ranking them, I would put the, the K one, the priority in that. And maybe this is the conversation we need to have later as, as a strategic planning. Let's start talking about order of things and priorities and what do we have the money to accomplish.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
But we are gonna have to some point address it.
But so the, the, the thing that I, you know, you, I don't think we demolished it, Council Robinson. May name it the Jack Burrell Center or something, but I don't think we demolished it.
Name it the Jack Burrell Center and then demolish it?
I would probably wait.
I didn't say that. That's not the word I put, but, but, you know, that's just a tough sale. I, you know, to put a million dollars without us having, um, a, a clear vision on where we're going. We don't, I, in my opinion, I, I would fix it up, but to spend millions of dollars in it, that's something that, that I probably wouldn't do as far as prudent season.
Mr. Johnson, how soon do you need, uh, I mean, just budget time?
Well, I think what I'm hearing is I have no fear to go back to G M C and say, what would a repair plan look like? What, what, what is?
I think that might be the.
Something that can get us.
Core man's plan.
A, a couple of years of relative peace of mind.
I think that's the right.
And, uh, you know, and, and it may be it's some strategic areas, you just have to pull it back and, and, and that repair really is a fix. But still, it, as opposed to doing the whole fifty thousand square foot of, of the ceiling or the roof.
Or even if you save, you know, it, it, and it still may be half a million dollars, but.
Yeah, but that's.
Million saved by half a million earned, right?
That's exactly right.
I think that's the more appropriate route to go right now, if you don't mind going back to them and, and asking for that.
It's hard for me to spend a million dollars on the roof when we got kids that don't have ball fields to play on.
Well.
It's just my opinion.
Do need a roof.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that's.
Well, and, and I love all my people at city hall, but they get real, real testy when there's water dripping on the desk, okay?
A million dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time on, on all of that.
We don't want the politics to drive the decision either, right?
Next item on the agenda is, uh, the vehicle purchases for fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, Kim? And, and council, the mayor reached out to me. This is basically related to, um, some vehicles we need to kind of give the green light to buying in advance of the budget cycle if we want to get them ordered. Kim, if you would.
Yes, so the state bid, um, you know, has gone out and so Ford, um, is gonna be allowing, um, as of this Friday. as of this Friday, it closes, to be able to pre-order F-150s. And so this gives us an opportunity to be able to put our order in. It doesn't totally lock us in, they just need a P.O. number. Ford requires them to have a P.O. number, and then if something happens down the road and we need to cancel the order, and I'll just give you some ideas. Some of the vehicles we got this year were other governments ordered them, and for some reason didn't get them, so we had some orders that actually had all the City of Auburn's name on them, on the invoices. So, but this is, you all know how hard it is to get a vehicles, and what we're asking for, what I showed you on the spreadsheet, is four F-150s for the general fund. I just broke it out that way, so you can see that the building department for one, meter department, and the rec department for two, gas department, one vehicle, one F-150, and then the electric department is requesting two. So it's a total of eight. And so what we were asking for today is, you know, kind of, it's more or less, if this is something you all agree upon, for us to be able to do some pre-ordering prior to the budget being passed. And then what the, in fact, what they are telling us is into November, we can start ordering like the F-250, some of the larger vehicles, but this is just to be able to get the send. These vehicles are probably be looking at still coming in in the April of next year. This isn't something, but they've got to put the pre-orders in.
Kim, I'm sorry, but my, I know you said you had a spreadsheet, it's not pulling up on.
It's in your, it's on your.
Email? On that, that I'm not looking at. But I was trying to pull it up online.
A large spreadsheet, so y'all could be able to see across there.
Kim, did you say one for gas?
Um, there's.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's two on the spreadsheet.
There's two on this machine.
Still got the eight, buddy.
That budgeted amount for the two in the gas department.
A little different.
Is quite a bit more than all the other F-150s, and it says you only have a fifteen-hundred included for the package, but even if you took that, even if you added to that, too, it doesn't seem like it would bump the price up that much. What am I missing on that budget number?
Is it a four by, I mean?
Those are about forty-five grand apiece versus the others.
What kind of truck is that?
They're all F-150s.
Four-door, four-wheel drive? How many? I sent two of those, so that's forty-one or.
Forty-five apiece.
Forty-five apiece. Well, I think it was like forty-one.
Three-something on this exact price. The one for electric that's, looks to be the.
The same as forty-two.
With the same add-ons, it's forty-one, seven, thirty-seven. Is there something different about that one?
I'm not sure if I got the six-cylinder or.
We got the six-cylinder, he's probably got the V-eight.
That may be the difference. But we have been going through the, obviously, there's just budget numbers. Ford has a spec sheet where you pick out, you know, V-six, V-eight, you know, all the different things, so.
And that's what we have to do, is print the spec sheets out, write the, a P.O. number on it, and send those spec sheets in for them to place the orders.
So if we budget this, I mean, how do we know this is going to be the?
Right. Well, so there's enough in the gas department fund if y'all decide to purchase the V-eights, or if we go down to the V-sixes.
Okay.
So I just did it on the.
You did it on the hot top number, and then if it comes down?
The V-six, you know, V-eight or.
This will cover whatever you order, and then.
Now, if we choose, if the mayor chooses to get a V-six, two-wheel drive, you know, there's plenty of money in there. And I didn't want to do it the other way around and not have enough money.
We appreciate that.
I have a question about the truck for the rec department, and that's really a good price. I always get surprised at how good of these prices are when you buy it on the state bid, but that F-150 for the parks custodian says they travel going from park to park to clean the restrooms. Is that something, they have a whole lot of items with them when they go to clean? I mean, because I'm thinking an F-150, you know, if you have a smaller pickup or something else, it's a lot more economical when you put a lot of miles on it.
And that's what she's been driving, is a Chevy Colorado, actually.
Yep.
And we wanted a Ford Ranger, but they're not on the state bid list this year.
I got you.
Well, the price on that, it looks like it must not have any.
It's twenty-six.
I mean, it's twenty-six thousand.
Yeah, it's cheap. It is cheap. I was thinking about the gas, the fuel bill, is what I was kind of thinking of.
We may have to get back and move that.
Lot of stopping to.
First, we're getting prices for the Rangers, and they came back and told us that.
May not have gotten that price updated, though.
We're not going to get a F-150 for twenty, is that a year 2023?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's the price for a Ford Ranger, it just hasn't been adjusted to that point fifty.
Oh, okay. That makes sense, yeah.
It should be around that thirty-three thousand dollar price.
And, and you just can't find the small pickup, maybe, even if, well, I guess if it's not on the state bid list, you have to put it out for bid, right?
And we, and we looked at that a few months back, we tried, we checked with local Ford dealerships, and they couldn't even get them for us. At the, at non-government prices even.
Car shop is not what it used to be, is it? Take the cheapest you get.
And that's, that's the reason we're trying to get these orders put in that, you know, allotment, so we can get our allotment in, so when it does come, you know, next April, when they start coming in, we'll be able to get them. What we're getting now is another government shows not to get that vehicle.
I just, I'm just, with the price of gas, I'm just trying to, trying to save a pinch of penny, I'm saving, you know, if they're truly running from point A to point B in the city, they're getting, they're going to be getting, you know, poorer gas miles compared to something more than.
And to be honest, if Tim Bong has something decent in a smaller size that's not going to be used, we'll take another hand-me-down. It's just the one we have has not been very reliable.
Yeah, sure. I get that, I get that.
So all of these electric, just clarification, except the one that says gas?
No.
Nah.
Do we look at the gov deals for gently-used vehicles occasionally? I mean, are they, they're probably just like any used car that's in decent shape, bringing a premium for used cars?
We're, we're getting a premium for the ones we sell in gov deals.
Yeah.
I mean, and recently, the parks department, we had one that was, he went and checked out the best of the best that we were selling, and parks took that just to be able to have a vehicle that they have, they were down one vehicle, so.
So if you did get a F-150, though, it's a little more versatile around different departments if you were passing around, I guess. Council, any other questions on this? I mean, I feel like we're in that spot where if you're going to get them in the budget, we kind of have to go ahead and order them now.
I think, yeah, take a leap of faith and trust that the mayor and the department has when they bring that budget to us, and we've gone through some of it already, that it's going to be, you know, a good budget, and, but we're going to get nothing if we wait too long.
And if we wind up not needing them, I mean, hopefully somebody else is out there like us that would, would take that vehicle, that it didn't get it ordered, so. I'd be in favor of moving forward and going ahead and sending out an order. You got to do that by Friday, right?
Yes. So is that something that we could just do a resolution authorizing the purchase of eight F-150s?
So is it the?
So I can, so I can issue a P.O.? Because I have to issue a P.O. for it.
You got to issue a P.O. by Friday.
Mm-hmm.
So you do have to issue a P.O., but.
You may be able to get out of it if you don't have to.
That's right. I know of another local government that is issuing a P.O. for this, to get their F-150s. They're going to be voiding those in October one, issuing another P.O. number, so that it doesn't encumber this year, it goes into next year's numbers.
So if we enter it now, do we get those set prices? Is that another?
That's, that's these prices.
That's what I'm asking. Those won't move, goalpost won't move on this.
So council president, I think that we could write up a resolution real quick, and then I would use, I would edit that amount of twenty-six thousand in the rec to whatever we did.
Add it by eight.
Cover thirty-five. Make sure it doesn't come back at thirty, you know, say thirty-four, it comes back at thirty-four, five, but I'd make it thirty-five, and then just call this, whatever, exhibit A, and have that go with the resolution.
And then walk it on and vote on it tonight. I think that sounds good to me. Marcus, if you don't mind, work on that. Everybody else good with that?
Train of thought.
All right. Thank you, Kim.
Okay, I'm going to update the spreadsheet, give him an updated spreadsheet, so we can.
For exhibit, perfect. That'll work. Thank you, ma'am. Council members, committee updates. Councilmember L.
Our fourth authority meets tomorrow afternoon, five o'clock, right here. And we have not had a rec board meeting since the last meeting, since the last council meeting.
Councilman Martin?
You saw my people here today, the advisory board. We have the Lut, Gitter, it's on the agenda tonight, as far as going in that One Dixie area over there to kind of trap plastics before it gets into the bay. So that's a good deal. Other than that, I don't have anything.
All right, Councilman Robinson?
Nothing for me.
Councilman Boone?
Harbor board meeting, but unfortunately didn't have a quorum. Did have a thorough discussion going on.
All right.
Didn't make any decision or vote on anything.
Had a meeting, a preliminary budget meeting, I guess, with the library board earlier this afternoon, so had some good, good conversation on that. We'll be bringing that forward in the next few weeks to the council. Next item up would be department head updates. I know, Jessica, I know you mentioned you had one.
Yes, thank you. We have an opportunity to apply for an EDECA recreational trails program grant. That application deadline is in September, September the 12th, actually. So what we were looking at doing in the past, the previous years that we've had this opportunity, we've applied for the Triangle project. As you know, we've gotten money from GOMESA to do that. We're working toward that project, but we've discussed the possibility of also adding an ADA compliant trail through that property as well, that would take you from the parking lot beside the outdoor classroom and through the property as well, to be able to, to give you another option. In previous years, that number has been a lot higher, because we were working for the full project. This year, I think that project would be a hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. Richard found my money for me today, which means that we would have a match requirement of thirty thousand dollars for that. I'm not saying we have this, we have to do this. I am saying that this is an opportunity for us to further that property and that project. If we were to pursue this, we would need to have this on the next council agenda. So I guess I'm looking for, do you want us to proceed, or would you like us to put the brakes on it?
I guess my question for the council would be, do y'all have enough ideas of what you want that overall project to look like before we, and if we apply for it and decide not to go that route, does that kind of look bad if you get awarded a grant, you don't, you don't move forward on it? I mean.
Well, in my opinion, I think anytime we're awarded a grant and we don't move forward, I think that probably doesn't look great, but, but obviously, I would, I would see to whomever may have more experience in that.
So I'd hate to miss the deadline on that. I just know that we've got the group working on the, the grand plan right now.
So how's that fit in the puzzle? Is it, have we puzzled it in?
We're working, we're waiting right now for a scope of work from the selected engineering firm for that, but I'm certain that that's something that we would want to do. Obviously, we have a desire for that project overall, to build it out, and I say build it out very loosely, but to be able to offer multiple trails throughout that, that property. So this would help us get to that, certainly.
I would think we could certainly put it to good use and have the people that ADA, that need ADA accessibility to be able to enjoy that. I just couldn't imagine that we have that opportunity to, and we only have a thirty-thousand match, that we would, you know, not, not pursue that. I think it, I think it'd be well worth pursuing. Whatever they're designing right now, probably wouldn't take too much to add, to make whatever paths they're making, enhance them to make them ADA compliant. Or even if it just runs adjacent to it in places.
Well, I believe that, maybe, speaking out of turn, but I believe that there was room in there for us to add things through, because obviously, you know, we got a million dollars from GOMESA for that, but we know, we see here every week how far a million dollars goes or does not go, so.
As long as we're not putting cart before the horse, I mean, that's, that's the only way. I just, yeah, as long as we can match it up, as far as construction and all the deed restrictions and all the parkland things that we had to deal with to do this, I would just hate to get it, and then there's problems, and not be able to use it because of scope and this and that. That's, that's, that's my thought process, that's the only thing I'm thinking about.
And I will say, I mean, we didn't just decide on that, that's something that, that we've gotten guidance from the mayor on. I know that we have done multiple projects in the past that have multiple grants that apply to each one of the properties.
You never know, it could be, you know, used for part of the restrooms to make them ADA accessible. We got to have them.
She said trail in particular.
Oh, the trails.
It's such a, because it is a recreational trails program. Yeah, it is.
See, that's.
But again, if you think about it, you know, the idea that, that we do have a parking lot, that we will have ADA accessible spaces in, you know, to be able to have that trail that makes it more accessible overall.
I think it would be nice, nice to have that as an offering. I just, I just want to make sure if we do get it, that we don't not use it.
Sure.
To your point a second ago.
We've got some time, but it will give us an opportunity of whether, or give us some guidance on whether you want us to pursue that work for the next two weeks before the next, next meeting.
What is the scope meeting? So we can kind of give an eye.
I honestly can't speak to that.
There's going to be some, I think there's going to be at least one.
I feel like there'll be multiple meetings on that, but I don't have that information in front of me, I'm sorry.
We would have to make this decision on applying for this before we're going to have that information. But this can be incorporated into, into that. I mean, well, they haven't designed it yet.
That's what I'm saying.
So, I know, I know, it's sort of.
My guess is they'll spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars real quick. It won't take much imagination to spend that. Okay, I get it.
Well, y'all in favor of putting that on the next agenda then, and pursuing it?
Good fingers.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you, Jessica. Did you have any other updates for us? Is that it? All right.
Thank you.
Got your helper with you today?
Yes.
Ready to start fourth grade?
Little government night at our house.
All right. Glad to have you here, Vivian. And Eric, how about you, sir? No updates? All right. Corey, anything?
We got something on the agenda tonight, I believe it's agenda item number sixteen, as far as creating a new position for benefits coordinator. This position would essentially take some work out of treasury. Since there's been a lot of turnover in my department, Kim has kind of picked up the slack, and her staff has really been tracking our benefits, so we thought it'd be a good idea to come up with a benefits coordinator position to handle all of our benefits and open enrollments, and all that kind of good stuff, and take over our benefits fair. So we went through the personnel board, and I know Diane's got some family in town today, or else she'd be here, but personnel board overwhelmingly approved it, and that is why we're here today, just to see if you guys would approve it as well.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Much appreciated. Any questions for Corey while he's up here?
Yeah, give me a little bit more about their day-to-day duties, when you say they're, they're coordinating, and you said they're signing them up and get the benefits fair and.
So each new employee that we hire has three benefits actions that go into it, like long-term disability, short-term disability, and then our health insurance and all that kind of good stuff. So they would be in charge of the benefits portion of onboarding the employee, and then they would keep up with enrolling people in Blue Cross Blue Shield for new hires, and then offboarding them when people terminate.
Are they going to have another role in addition to that? Do you see them doing other things, or is that going to? Then somebody's doing that part-time right now, right?
Yes.
Is that you?
No, it's, uh, we've got a person and a half, and Kim's staff. But in the position description, it does have them, uh, being the backup payroll person, basically to take care of time sheets and payroll if our payroll person's out.
So another, another piece that, um, when Nick thinks he left in, um, the end of December, what Treasury Department has taken on is the part that was coming out of somebody's check. Now we're comparing it to a bill and to make sure what came out of their check and before we pay in the provider, that it's the correct amount. And, and the other piece that I see I'm reconciling is that we terminate some employees, but we're not necessarily going to Blue Cross on a timely manner. And then I'm looking at, we still have somebody on Blue Cross that, um, was terminated three months ago. So those kinda things, that we don't have a person in there that's filling that role, that's checking those boxes, because it's our staff that look at, oh, we just terminated, they just turned in their termination. The department had turned their termination in, but we didn't go in Blue Cross and change that. We didn't go flexibility, we didn't change their dental. And so those are kinda things that I'm seeing when I'm looking at stop laws. We need to calculate the stop laws based on the number of people on the insurance. Well, they're really, they're gone, and we're still paying a stop loss deal, a Blue Cross deal. So those pieces are just, you know, that's not being done timely, because they don't have the time. And then, you know, it's, it's, it's Saturday working on that.
One last question. Why today? Why not during the budget period, when we usually have these jobs?
So we thought with the recent retiring and turnover in treasury, that now would be a better time to do it than at budget time. And then we're, HR, we're not requesting any positions in the new budget.
Okay. Just wanna go ahead and get that on the field.
Thank you for that answer.
It helps train now, so that when the new year budget and when they have open enrollment.
You've already got somebody here for.
They started training them, because open enrollment's gonna start in November, and you're try, you're just trying to hire benefits person, and they're really way behind of what the city of Fairhope used to train them for. It's my personal opinion.
Gotcha.
Sounds like you already have someone. You have someone in mind already? It's okay.
No, no, so we were gonna do, uh, internal and external advertisement, if approved. I mean, we did have a good conversation with Dobbs Allen last week, and at the end of our, uh, conference call, we kinda mentioned it to him, and they thought that they might have a few people involved in county that would be interested.
Very good.
Okay. Thank y'all.
Very good.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Jeremy, while you're standing up, do you have anything?
We're all good in the gas department. Since we met two weeks ago, we did receive RFUs from four engineering companies. The mayor, Kevin, there's five of us that will spend the next week and a half individually reviewing those engineering firms, grading them, and then we'll bring that to you, I think the 22nd, um, once we get through grading everybody. So good news, but we've got, we've got four viable candidates to take on the engineering. Appreciate the trucks, if it passes. I know Kim and the lady have been working, trying to get this stuff ordered, you know, so it doesn't take too long to come in.
Anything on the agenda, or you, just the trucks? All right.
You don't want those trucks?
We do want trucks.
They're on agenda today.
So we do have trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They gotta add it.
In theory.
Yeah.
Richard, I know you've probably got a, a few items tonight.
Yes, but I think I hope to make it pretty short. Uh, item number six, I think everybody's happy with the garbage ordinance that we discussed, uh, at the last meeting. So if you don't have any questions there, I think that has been well discussed and, and thought through, and I appreciate all your input.
I have one question on that point of information. They, the, the, the one question that I saw that the public may ask, because this is kinda how we got to this, people calling and asking like, what's this and what's that? Why is this not on there? Was the alleyway extra charge? But there's no number for alleyway. If you can't get the truck into the alleyway, there will be an additional charge. What does that look like?
And I, I think that's a provision, if, if we ever run in that case, but, you know, we, as, as you know, we, we have what we call our backdoor trucks, and they're a 11-yard truck that is designed to go and operate an alley. So we, you know, we, we accommodate that, so that, that is a historical item that has carried through several, several versions. And I think that is, you know, uh, and, and I'm gonna give you the example, the new development right across from Public Works. It has alleys, but, but part of the preliminary approval was that we will only service sanitation from the street frontage, okay? And then what's gonna happen, even though it's written in stone and recorded and memorialized in the final plats and all agreements upfront, they're gonna come to you and want us to pick up behind their houses, okay? And if you say, Richard, even though it was all agreed to in the beginning that sanitation would only be picked up from the house frontage, we want you to pick it up behind, then that is an option for us to say, okay, here is the cost of providing that service, because the alleyway is not designed for a big truck. Secondly, every time a sprinkler head gets broken, I'm gonna get blamed for it.
Yeah.
Okay? So I think that's why that provision is there.
Yeah, I get it. I'm just wondering, do we wanna go ahead and make that algorithm, since we're putting this? Or do we wanna just wait and come back and amend it again?
It sounds like they almost left it ambiguous so that they could adjust according to the situation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I think that would be the intent that was there, yes, sir.
Okay. And I, I know you got a few other items, probably.
Uh, number 10, this is, Paige and I are kinda in coheseness here. As you know, we included the Nick Center resurfacing in the package that went out for this year. They had budgeted 41,250, the price came in at 57. We did not award that portion of the contract. Being out there, I recently had a couple of community meetings at the Nick Center, and I'll just tell you that, uh, there were some folks having some trouble getting, uh, from their cars because of some of the damage, and, and there was a memo, and, and Paige's folks took a plethora of pictures that, that were attached there. And Paige is budgeting for it to be in this next year. Here's the problem, looking at the numbers, it's gonna be considerably more expensive. The contractor said they will honor the price that was bid, and we're just asking if we could go ahead and move forward in this paving package to add it back and amend the contract, and it would require an additional appropriation of 15,964.50 to, to, to beyond what is currently budgeted. And I, and here's the reality, we can, we can go through the budget process, and more than likely, it's gonna be 10 or 20 percent more next year when we get to it. It's just an opportunity cost, and there is a potential for a public safety concern. So we're asking for that consideration tonight. 11 is the clock corner, uh, moving forward with that. I'd be glad to answer any questions about that. And then number 13 is one of those, and I know we play lots of let's make a deal. So real quickly, and hopefully I won't confuse you on this, in this budget year, you approved the purchase of two outfront lawnmowers, and luckily, we added the word "or equivalent", because we specified a John Deere. We placed the order for those two lawnmowers somewhere in the 1st of November of 2021. We have been delayed, uh, the, the vent, local vendor is Beard Equipment Company, the John Deere represented for commercial lawnmowers, and the factory has said, we, we, we cannot fulfill the order, we're gonna honor it, but we can't fulfill it, and we are now, uh, at the earliest that those lawnmowers may be available to us is October of 2022, okay? But with the fact that you had equivalent in there, we found a Skag Diesel 72-inch outfront mower, which we were able to purchase. We got one of the two purchased, but we have another outfront John Deere lawnmower on the budget coming up. We have to take the purchase order that was issued to buy the two that we were hoping to get this year and modify it back to one, but we already have been warned that the price of that lawnmower going into the next budget year is considerably more than the $30,000. So what we're asking is before we take the, the, the purchase order, that they will continue to honor the price. It may still not get the machine until October or November, but we would like to go ahead and keep, keep that price, because it's about a $6,000 savings for us to get the exact same lawnmower. And the problem is, if we wait until after budget year and then reorder, we pay $6,000 more, and we may wait another year to get it. So that is what that is about. And, uh, again, it's, it's kind of an advance on the budget, and then if, if that is agreeable, then that lawnmower comes out of the budget, because it, it, it doesn't have to be budgeted, because it'll stay on that original two-mower purchase order. Does that make sense?
I appreciate you working to find a way to save money. Counsel, any questions on that?
Thank you all very much.
All right, that, that's it for you?
Yes, sir.
All right. Um, let's see, Jason, I think you got at least something on there. Number eight, maybe?
Yes, sir, I got, we got two, and on the second one, our engineer is here, and he can, uh, explain a little bit more detail than I can on that. But number eight is just a resolution to allow us to use, utilize SE Civil, do the engineering on the water line from treatment plant three on Canaro 33 down to 32, with 12-inch duct lined length.
And number nine?
Questions on number nine, is the change order?
Yes, sir. How are you?
Andy Bogey with Dewberry. Project on Fairhope Avenue, it's a forced main project, it's been progressing very well. Contractor, 64 percent complete to date, using only 48 percent of the time at this point. We've had some savings that we've realized on the project. The proposed change order is to have a opportunity to reconnect sewer. It will take less input from staff, it will be safer, have less likelihood of spills. It's gonna speed the process up as well. Uh, we're adding a 16-inch tap, tapping valve and sleeve, and a 16-inch, uh, insert valve. There's a couple of items that have to come out that are demolition, and that is the gist of the change order, projecting out project finish. The current value of the project is 1,578,610. We're projecting that the project's gonna finish roughly 1,542, $42,000. There's roughly a $35,000 under budget, where we're projecting even with this proposed change order.
All right, I'm confused a little bit.
Is that the 158, Ken?
Yeah, the 158,000.
Correct.
So what do you say?
But that's gonna increase the bid to 1,736, but you think that it's gonna come in under budget?
Correct. The rea, the reason it's increasing the value is because we are adding items that aren't currently in the project, so we have to add those values to the project.
To the bid, as it was, but it's actually gonna come in?
We have several items that we're anticipating underrunning.
Okay.
Those aren't realized on this change order.
Okay.
They'll be realized at the end of the project, and we're projecting that it's gonna be under the current bid value.
So you think it's actually gonna come in below the 1, I mean, below the 1.5?
Yes.
1,532.
Thirty, thirty.
1,532 is the total with the increase?
1,542. I'm one, 1,542, 688, 83 as well, I'm projecting.
With the one, with the one additional, 158?
Correct.
One, I got 1.5?
Which is $35,000.
I got you.
Below the first one. Gotcha.
Correct.
Okay.
Wow, that, that changed my, that's cool. Yeah, I like that.
Well, thank you.
So it's, it's always tough with the numbers game, with showing that we're adding items to the bid. It increases the number, but we're actually gonna hit something lower than that.
Yeah, because I was really disappointed by that big old number of change order. Yeah, that's cool. Very good.
Is that somewhere in writing that the, well, that the total's gonna be the 1,542 in change?
That's a projection right this minute. That's my conservative estimate. It, it, if I'm honest, it's probably less than that, but I don't have those real numbers yet, and we still got some paving to do.
Yeah, well, it'll make us happy. It don't happen very often.
That's the plan.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions for Andy?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, let's see. Mayor's not here, so she was probably gonna talk about that Quail Creek. I guess I can cover that, um, unless Kim, who else would cover that, the Quail Creek? Number 12. I can, I can take that, I guess. Let's see, number 14, Jeff, is that you? All right, if you don't mind coming up real quick. Any questions?
It's the yearly upgrade that we have to do each year for the support and maintenance for our unit system.
All right. Okay, Counsel, any questions for Jeff while he's up here? All right, thank you, sir. And I know we're trying to wrap up real quick, take a quick break. Uh, Thomas Hospital, I think everybody's probably seen that, the Certificate of Need Review Board. Is anyone to speak to that specifically? You're, y'all good with that, Counsel? Sure. Okay. Cory, we'll let you designate that. And then I skipped over, uh, litigator, so I know, I see Don in the back, and anyone? Kim, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So this is, uh, very quickly, our, just a litter abatement program that we're proposing, and the FEED passed a motion to support it. Cory drove that, and mayor's in support of it, and Calpin Creek is our largest watershed, and this would capture litter in a central detention area that captures, um, litter in four shopping centers, and that drained to that pond. So it, it's the perfect, um, spot to collect litter to keep it from going downstream. If you have any questions on how that works.
Yes, sir. I was, I was gonna say, we, we're already up to 6 o'clock. I was gonna say we should probably, um, adjourn, and if you got a question for Don at the, at the time, we'll get you during the meeting, if that's all right.
Great.
Thank y'all. Uh, take about a five-minute break.